You are watching Access Lapeur County, Channel 97. Coming up next, the November 15th meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by going to www dot access Lapeur County dot org.
Good evening. Today is Tuesday, November 15, 2022, our regular common council meeting. I would like to call this to order by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and silent prayer. And if you can silence your phones at this time. All right, Ms. Nyle up on the roll call.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Mack.
Present.
Ms. Deitch.
Present.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Present.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Ms. Jagus.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have nine present and no one absent.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the hybrid Zoom meeting from November 1st, 2022. Any comments, questions, or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Don Pribulinski and a second by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman. Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Are there any reports of any standing committees? Yes, Councilman Don.
Madam President, being the liaison to the sanitary district, I just want to report to the council that there has been no correspondence yet from this town of Long Beach in reference to the sanitary sewer extension and the half a million dollars that they owe the city of Michigan City. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Any additional committees? All right, we'll move on to the finance committee chair, committee chair Tracy Tillman.
Thank you, Madam President. On November 15, 2022, the city finance committee met this evening and there was not a quorum. It was an informal, I went over the funds number 2042 for the riverboat claims totaling $68,910. That amount includes Frontier Lawn and Recreation in the amount of $21,891. Marcus Electric, Inc., $47,019 totaling $68,910.
Thank you.
And also, the Riverboat Statement of Cash Position as of the fiscal year November 14, 2022,
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
$4,400, I'm sorry, $4,433,398.87.
All right, thank you. So we have today on November 15th, our claims docket, Fund 2042 Riverboat Claims for $68,910. Zero claims for Fund 2031 and for a total of $68,910. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Jean Simmons and a second by Councilwoman Michael Mack. Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Nay, on the basis of, I believe this should come out of the general fund. Thank you.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and one opposed.
All right, thank you. Are there any reports of any special or select committees? Any reports of any special or select committees? I will just make a few comments about a workshop we had last week. It wasn't a committee, but last week on Thursday, the 10th, oh wait, what week are we, yeah, we're Thursday, the 10th. We did have a workshop to talk about annexation and I thought it was a good dialogue. I know there are going to be some amendments that are going to be forthcoming at the next council meeting to clean up some of the language so that we can put some of the questions to rest, to bed, that have been coming up from different town councils, attorneys, engineering firms in reference to the annexation. So more forthcoming at the next meeting. All right, any reports from the mayor or other city officers or departments? Yes, Chief Lagal.
Good evening, Council President, all council members. Just a quick report from the fire department, I'm sorry, double go Michigan City Fire Department. So for the month of October, we've had a total number of 370 incidences, 12 fires, 283 rescue slash emergency medical calls, seven hazardous condition calls, 15 service calls, 50 good intent calls, and three false alarm calls. Now, I know Councilman Presbleinsky asked me about good intent calls. I did a little research. Some of them were like carbon monoxide detector calls. We would classify those as a good intent call. Food on stove, it may become across as a structure fire, but then it wasn't. So we have to classify it as something. So it was just a good intent call. Maintenance people working on alarms, they could have been classified as false alarms, but there wasn't really a need, you know, a specific purpose or reason for it. So it's up to the captain's judgment call. That's why a lot of these good intent calls could be false alarms. So I just wanted to let you know on that. Seven Narcan, seven calls where Narcan was actually used, so seven confirmed overdose calls. And I'd also like to thank all of the council for looking into the inspection fee that Council President Deitch brought up and they're revamping it into an, to include emergency assistance program. That's going to benefit the city greatly. So I just want to thank all of you for doing that.
Thank you. Any questions on, yes, Councilman Don?
With the carbon monoxide.
Mm-hmm.
Call, that's a good intent call. So how does that come about? I mean, if you don't think your carbon monoxide alarm is not working properly, you can call the fire department and they'll come and check it out? What, how does, what's that all about?
Majority of the time, the alarm goes off, so they call 911. They send us, we take our instruments in there and read it and make sure that there is no level. If it's just a malfunction, if there is a level, then we try to find it and do the appropriate, we air it out, open it up, make sure they don't need medical treatment. So it's usually when the alarm goes off, it's either low batteries or just a malfunction, an old detector will go off. So we have to investigate it. We will check it out, make sure there's no high levels of carbon monoxide.
Thank you.
I'll be sticking around for public comment to talk to you about a fire truck.
All right, thank you. Any additional reports from the mayor or any other city departments? Yes, Chief. Chief Forker.
Good evening, council. Again, Chief Steve Forker, Michigan City Police Department. Just again, go over some statistics from October. The police department responded to 2,960 calls for service during the month of October. Comparison to 2021 where we responded to 3,339. So calls for service were down. Case reports taken, so was 410 for this year, again, down from last year at 522. Shots fired, kind of topic of concern for everyone, is at 33 for the month of October. And then that was actually up six from 2021, which was 27. With that, I move into our Flock update. We have finalized camera locations with Flock. We have been assigned a project manager now and they will be working with, planning to pull those permits and get those, start breaking ground here, hopefully within the next couple of weeks. So we're hoping by Christmas that those permits will be pulled and whatnot and we can start breaking ground on those. Hopefully start being effective January, so. For the Raven and with the shot detection, the installation on that is looking to early spring on that. A few things we're working on within the department. We have established a recruitment and retention team. We've had nine members of our department that want to volunteer and be a part of that. We have seen some turnover here in the last several years. And it's important to me to bring in some, some other members of our department with all different types of experiences and just figure out what it takes. What is it going to take to keep people here? What's it going to take to get more people interested in coming to Michigan City? So we're working on that. Actually, today we did receive one more letter of resignation. One of our younger officers is leaving for another department. With that team, we're hoping to seek out some, some help, some help there. We're not recruiters, we're not advertisers, we're not promotional people. So we're looking, you know, for some assistance there and promoting, obviously the police department promoting what we have to offer. And obviously what Michigan City has to offer. We had a great meeting last week with the Economic Development Commission. And obviously there's some big things to come here to this city. So we want to try to use some of that stuff to attract some new, some new fresh faces, some good officers, some seasoned officers, and get a great mix. Our police commission is set to finalize our lateral transfer stuff, hopefully tomorrow at our meeting. We have a police commission meeting at 11:00 a.m. tomorrow, so that stuff should be finalized there. Been working with them the last month to get that stuff in place. So that's important. I think we can bring in some, some good experience. Right, right now we are a young department and we need some experience to help offset some of that. So again, finding different ways to, you know, use all this great stuff we have going on here to bring in some, some experience and fresh new faces. So that's what I have for now. So again, thank you guys for your continued support. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any, any questions for Chief Forker from the council members? Yes.
How you doing? Thank you, Chief. So I was going to ask about the, the number of officers and are they mostly being lost to transfers to other department or retirements? Or was, or just leaving the police profession as a whole or?
It's a, it's a combination of everything over the years. I know we've lost, the last number I had was 37 that we've lost over the last three years. I don't have the exact numbers, but yeah, some of them are going to other departments. I would say chasing money. And then others are just chasing new careers. We've had officers leave new careers. And then we, we also have had some officers to, I would say, unplanned retirements. They qualified, they had their 20 years in, so they did retire, I would say abruptly, some of them. So it's been a combination of all of them. So again, it's just a way, I think we had to figure out ways to attract and entice people to come here because this is, obviously you guys know this place is going to be great here in about five to 10 years. I mean, it already is, but you know, the development is going to be insane. So, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, yes.
Question.
Yes, go ahead.
Chief Forker, were you, can you confirm that for the flock and the raven that all, there is a total of six?
Yeah.
That was a question prior that we were trying to get confirmation on. I believe the border works did three and the others was going to be.
The redevelopment commission.
Redevelopment, yes.
So the total number of Ravens?
Yeah, so it's going to cover four square miles, is my understanding.
So it's only four then? Total? Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional reports from city departments? All right, are there any petitions?
There are no petitions this evening.
All right, thank you. Communications.
In accordance with the ordinance number 4538, correspondence was received in the clerk's office on November 4th regarding an accident that happened.
Sorry, on 10/27/22 with the Michigan City Police Department vehicle. In accordance to that ordinance as well, an accident report was received in the clerk's office on November 4th regarding the incident that took place on November 2nd regarding another vehicle from the police department. Correspondence was also received in the clerk's office on November 7th from Porter County Superior Court 2 regarding a summons filed by Kyle Casperzak. In accordance to ordinance 4538, an accident report was received in the clerk's office on November 9th that took place on May 8th, 2022 involving MCPD vehicle.
Thank you, Ms. Nyle. And I would also like to acknowledge, it looks like we have a student here in the audience. So just welcome you to, to the council meeting this evening. Ms. Nyle, first resolution by title only.
A resolution by title only, a resolution increasing and decreasing certain appropriations in the budget of the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund 2001 for the year 2022 in Michigan City, Indiana. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney and Ms. Jagus.
Are there any comments from the sponsors?
Just real quick, this is simply a money move transferring within the department to cover gasoline costs.
All right, thank you. All right, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? All right, comments from the council? Comments, yes, Councilman Don.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Don Pribulinski and a second by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman. Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. The resolution passed. Ms. Nyle up the next resolution by title only.
A resolution increasing and decreasing certain appropriations within the budget of the central maintenance of General Fund 1001 for the year 2022 in Michigan City, Indiana. And this is also introduced by Mr. Dabney and Ms. Jagus.
Any comments from the sponsors?
Real quick, just another transfer of the funds to cover gasoline.
All right, comments from the public? Comments from the public? Any comments from the public? That being said, comments from the council.
Madam President.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question for the city controller. By making this transfer, is this going to cover the gas shortfall for the year?
Yvonne Hoffman, Esther City Controller. Yes, it should, hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilman Paul.
I have a question also on the, the money transferring, especially in the repair and maintenance of equipment, $60,000. Are you, are we looking at that we are over budgeted that much for the year since we only have like six more weeks left in the year? And also, what if we have a major breakdown and say we get, start getting this snow this week and we have a major problem? Are we going to, are we going to have money left? I understand that. Or where are we going to get the money to repair? And I understand that gas is going up and everything's going up and there are shortages, but are we going to run to the riverboat to take money out? Since we're taking this out of these funds right now and is, is this actually leftover money that would have been from the riverboat? That's all one big question.
You're, you're, so I understand your question. You're, you're questioning some of the line items that will reduce.
Questioning the $60,000 that you're taking out of repair and maintenance equipment. If we are over budgeted that much in the budget for this year, if that money came out of riverboat funding and are we going to, what are we going to do if we have a problem to repair vehicles?
Well, we left a, we left an operating budget in that line item that should carry us through the end of the year.
And what is that?
If we have 12 trucks break down tomorrow, I don't know if we would have had enough money at the beginning of the year to cover that. Fortunately, he did have money left in his budget on this line item that covered the $143,000 deficit in the gasoline line. And the riverboat money that goes to the general fund is less than a tenth of the revenue that goes into that fund. So we could probably safely say that this $60,000 did not come from.
So you're saying that we're going to have enough money if, if we do have a problem, we'll have money there?
Yes, yes, I am saying.
So then what you're saying also is that you are over budgeted.
No, I'm saying that we were fortunate this year that we did not have a tremendous amount of breakdowns and there was money available in that line item to transfer.
Any additional comments?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Jagus.
Support.
And the second by Councilman Jean and Councilman Brian Dabney. Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
And Mr. Mack.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you. The, the resolution passes. Ms. Nyle, the next ordinance by title only on second reading?
An ordinance on second reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Riverboat Fund for the construction of new fuel farm at the Michigan City Municipal Airport. And this is introduced by Mr. Simmons.
Does, this was published in the Herald Dispatch, October 19, 2022. A formal public hearing was held on November 1st, 2022. Are there any comments by the sponsor?
Negative.
All right, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Hearing none? Are there any comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Paul.
I would ask that we move this for, have third reading this evening.
Is there support?
Support.
All right, we have a motion to see, hear this on third reading by Councilman Paul Pribulinski and a second by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman. Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. If you can read the same ordinance by title only on third reading?
An ordinance on third reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Riverboat Fund for the construction of new fuel farm at the Michigan City Municipal Airport. And this is introduced by Mr. Simmons.
Does the sponsor have any comments?
Negative.
All right, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Don Pribulinski and a second by Councilman Paul Pribulinski. Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
And Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. If you can have the next ordinance by title only on second reading?
An ordinance on second reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the ARP Coronavirus Local Physical Recovery Fund for the fifth edition of the initial plan for use of portion of the city allotment of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies for capital equipment for the street department and refuge department. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Yes, any comments from the sponsor?
None at this time.
All right, any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Comments from the public? All right, no comments from the public? Comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Don.
First of all, with the ARP money that was allocated to the city, the $16 million, I guess we should give kudos to the federal government for giving us that money to being able to do what we're doing. Without that $16 million being allocated to us, you know, where would we be getting these garbage trucks from? Probably from the riverboat. Training another million dollars, now we'd be down to $3 million in a riverboat. And same thing with this sidewalk snowplow that we're allocating money for tonight, which I don't know the exact amount, but I believe it's somewhere in the neighborhood. Correct me if I'm wrong. City Controller, $200,000, I believe is what that piece of equipment is going to cost. Somewhere, you ever take a few dollars? Yeah, so thank you, federal government, for helping Michigan City and the rest of the nation out in that regards. With the street department and, and the piece of snow removal equipment that is going to let us, I guess, survive by the ordinance that was passed two years ago. And when the snow is over four inches deep, that the snow will be plowed on Franklin Street sidewalks, Michigan Boulevard sidewalks. And maybe, I think, maybe in the downtown area, there's some sidewalks that need to be, need to be plowed. And with that piece of equipment, I can see that maybe there's going to be another necessity that we, the city may have to indulge in doing some snow removal on sidewalks. And that's if you take a look at the double track project. All right, and the sidewalk that is going to be on the south side of the street. Right now, that street is only wide enough probably to get a snowplow down it. Then where's all that snow going to go? That's going to be piled up in that street. It's going to go right up on that sidewalk where the sidewalk's only going to be three feet away from the edge of the street. That snow has nowhere else to go. So we'll see what the complications will be at that time when this street gets opened up and we have a, a snowfall there. Also, this piece of equipment that Street Superintendent Sean Smith wants to buy, I have seen this piece of equipment, I have seen it not operated with snow, but this piece of equipment was in the city during the summertime and I was able to see it maneuver around sidewalks in the downtown area. And I, I can tell you that this piece of equipment is going to get the job done. It's going to get it completed, get the snow removed like we have to. And also, the good thing about this piece of equipment is that there's other attachments that go along with this piece of equipment. And I don't want to get into all of them because I don't know all of them. And I know that Sean and I have talked about it. And this is going to replace the snow blower that was acquired for $25,000 that was inadequate to get done what the city needed to get done. So hopefully we can take that piece of equipment, possibly put it on eBay and maybe get another 20,000 back out of it and try to recruit some of that money. So yeah, I am, I, oh, and then, and then I want to talk about the refuse trucks. So we have three refuse trucks that went down all at one time. And I'm not laying blame with anybody on how all this took place. But the refuse department, the sanitary district needs to come up with a replacement program and financing program, however that has to be done so that we don't sit here all at one time and now we have to spend a million dollars on garbage trucks. If you're going to do that, maybe replace one garbage truck every other year at $300,000. You know, because you got to, I look at it like this, if you have a garbage truck down, that's like having a police car down. That's like having a fire truck down. People expect their refuse to be picked up. It's a health and safety matter and it's a quality of life matter. So I, I want the refuse department and sanitary district to look at some type of replacement program and some type of financing program for these, for these trucks. And with, with that being made, with that being said, I make the motion. And with, with that being made, with that being said, I make the motion that we also have third reading on this uh.
Second.
Ordinance tonight.
All right.
And get the ball rolling so we can get this equipment into the city.
All right, we have a motion to move a third reading by Councilman Don Priblinsky and the second by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman. After the vote, we still will be on second reading for any additional comments before we move to third. Uh, Ms. Nyla on the vote.
Ms. Jigas.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preselinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preselinski.
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right. Any additional comments on second reading, Councilman, um, Paul Priblinsky?
Uh, I would uh coincide with what uh, Councilman Don Preselinski said about the equipment. And that uh, I uh, I think that. That one piece of equipment's gonna save a lot of manpower with the Street Department. But also what Mr. uh, Councilman Preselinski uh, talked about with the uh, double track. And how it's gonna affect Eleventh Street and the uh, uh. Concrete embankments that they're putting up down there. And that is a real concern. I was looking at some of that street today on how wide that street. Is and if a regular plow's gonna be able to get down there and what's gonna happen with the snow. Because the concrete embankments that they're putting up, you're not gonna, you're not gonna be. I think that's a dual purpose that they're putting them up there. So there's no snow going into the uh, uh, track bed. But um, you know, it's the, they all said that the double track was the greatest thing since sliced butter. But um, I don't think that it uh. If you go down there and look at that street, if it's really gonna uh, pan out to our benefit. And I know there's a lot of real estate speculation going on. And I heard on the radio. How it's helping Michigan City and increasing our tax base. Well, you know what that does to the average citizen? Raises their annual tax rate. So is it the greatest thing since sliced butter? So now we're even making it harder. For people to buy homes in Michigan City that are marginal. I have uh. Moderate incomes. So what, but I do support getting those trucks for uh. The Sanitary District because we don't want to have the garbage piling up in the alleyways. That's one of our responsibilities. And years ago, there was a um. Move, there was a, not a, there was a movement by a couple council members. To privatize the Sanitary District. And a study was done. And it was proven how efficient the Sanitary District was. On what an outside contractor would charge us. And I, I still feel that they do a very efficient job. That, what we talked about, uh, the fee structure on pickups has to change. That has to be dealt with. It's gonna have to be dealt with by the Sanitary Board and the City Council. On these people who are running businesses and dumping their garbage out on the streets. And not paying any, anything for it. And that has to be addressed. And, and we are gonna address it. And if you wanna check one out, there's one on four-ten Detroit Street that somebody either re- repossessed a home. And they threw everything out of that house onto the driveway next to the alleyway. So. I uh, I, yeah, we need those sanitary trucks and we're gonna get it. Thank you.
I need to go back. This is um, a formal public hearing for tonight. Um, so I will open it back up to um, the public for a formal public hearing. Um, this is still on second reading. Um, any um, comments from the public on formal public hearing for this ordinance? Any comments from the public? Any comments online? Comments from the public? All right, thank you. All right, moving on to third reading, same ordinance on, by title only on third reading.
An ordinance on third reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the ARP Coronavirus Local Physical Recovery Fund. For the fifth addition to the initial plan for use of a portion of the city's allotment of local physical, physical recovery funds. Through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies for capital equipment for the Street Department and Refuge Department. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Any comments from the sponsor? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Or comments from the public? Comments from the council? On third reading.
Most still approved.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick and the second by Councilman uh, Bryant Dabney, Ms. Nyla on the vote.
Mr. Paul Preselinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preselinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
And Ms. Jigas.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, under new business, um, we have several um, advice and consents. Uh, Mayor Perry is asking the, the Michigan City County Council for their advice and consent regarding their. His reappointment of Mr. Marty Corley as a member of the Human Rights Commission term will begin immediately and expire eleven to twenty-two six. Um, the, we can do these all together since they're advising consent, if you all don't mind. Is everybody okay with that? The next one is for um, the reappointment of Ms. Albertine Allen as a member of the Human Rights Commission. Term will begin immediately and expire on eleven to twenty-six. And also the reappointment of Ms. Bunny. Demke as a member of the Human Rights Commission term will begin immediately and expire on eleven to twenty. Uh, twenty-six. And the last one is for the reappoint, his appointment of Mr. Greg Coulter, Gregory Coulter is a member of the Human Rights Commission. Term will begin immediately and expire twelve-one twenty-two-six. Do I have a motion?
I make the uh, motion that we uh, vote on all four of these at one time. And if I may. Since I am the liaison to the Human Rights Commission, uh, I don't know Mr. Gregory Coulter, do not know who he is. But the three other individuals, uh, Mr. Marty Corley. Ms. Albertine Allen and Ms. Bunny Demke, they are uh, all outstanding. Hardworking individuals for that uh, for that commission. And I highly recommend that all the council members vote for their approval.
Thank you. Yes, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Support.
Support, uh, Mr. Uh, Councilman Gene Simmons. Any other comments? I know, I, I know Mr. Coulter well.
Yes, I was gonna say, I know Mr. Coulter as well, and he will also be a fine addition to that commission.
All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Nyla on the vote for all four.
Ms. Tillman. Aye. Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preselinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jigas.
Aye.
And Mr. Paul Preselinski.
Aye.
There's nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. Congratulations for um, Mr. Coulter for his appointment and the reappointments for the um, remaining. All right, for FYI, the council has one appointment to the Michigan City Women's Commission. Um, right now, currently, the incumbent is Nicole Coleman. Term expires at the end of the year. We have two appointments for the Redevelopment Commission. The incumbents are myself and Kathy Dennis, expires at the end of the year. Um, the council has one appointment to the Fire Merritt Commission. Term expires at the end of the year. The incumbent is Desiree Nichols. Um, we have an appointment to the Veterans Commission, representing a member of the service that deals with PTSD. Um, the incumbent is Keith Deveraux, expires at the end of the year. And then we have um, one appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the incumbent is Kathy Stransky. On unfinished business, um, we have received a letter from the Michigan City Area Schools, which was voted on. At their um, school board meeting for the appointment of Mr. Du- Pastor Dwayne Hurt. To fill the remaining term and next year. Um, on the social status for African-American males representing in Michigan City Area Schools. Is there a motion? Um, for Mr. Dwayne Hurt?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman and second by Councilman Paul Priblinsky, uh, Ms. Nyla on the vote.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Yeah, aye.
Mr. Don Preselinski.
Aye.
Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jigas.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preselinski.
Aye.
Aye.
We have nine in favor.
All right, I will open up for comments from the public. State your name and, and just for the record again, um, if there are any complaints or anything for any boards or commissions. That they should be placed in writing to the City Council and not aired out here um, in public comment. So with that being said, uh, for comments, uh, state your name and address. Thank you.
Uh, Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I just wanna give a quick public service comment. Couple weeks ago on Thursday, I had a gentleman come knocking on the door, wanting to give me a house inspection. There's no how going around door-to-door soliciting unless you get a, go up on Monday, you gotta get a permit from the Board of Works. Uh, that's unacceptable. I told him, he had a graphic wrapped truck, and he said, I'm not selling, selling anything this or that, trying to get me a SP. I said, no, you gotta leave. You gotta out of the city, don't come. It, one important thing to look for, any contractor, this is important, I think a lot of content, you need to get on some of these contractors about that. Uh, all your contractors, if they do any type of electrical plumbing, rangeback work, they're required by ordinance to have the name of their business. The name of the city they're based out of, and their telephone number listed on each side of their vehicle. And I always look for that. And I just, the, the other thing, just a little lighter note, uh, the Black McDonald's operators of uh, of Chicagoland. They're having their, their turkey giveaway tomorrow at the McDonald's Market Lot on Michigan Boulevard. It's lineup starts at seven-thirty a.m. So if anybody wants the turkey for your Thanksgiving, go, go get your turkey. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Any additional public comments? Just no public comments? I write out, yeah, oh, I almost forgot about you. You almost, you almost didn't make it.
I did.
Council President, Council Members, Douglas Gold, Michigan City Fire Chief. Just a reminder, uh, we're still in need of a fifteen-year-old fire truck. My, I want to extend my invitation personally to meet with any of you, all of you, all at once, it doesn't matter. We can get together, figure out how we're gonna finance this thing. Send me in the right avenue. We just gotta make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comments? That being said, uh, open up for comments from the council. Yes, Councilwoman Jigas.
Um, yes, uh, so first of all, I just wanna remind all the non-for-profits that these, you know, non-for-profit grants. Are open. I have a link to it on my uh, webpage, dallyashigas.com. I also. You can go to Unity Foundation and find the link. So there is a, you know, a deadline for, I think, I believe it's December twentieth. So start looking at that. It's not a complicated application, but we need to know, you know, who's requesting money. And on a second note, you know, the holidays are coming. And uh, I've heard a couple of people asking, where can we volunteer? And I believe the Salvation Army is still looking for ringers. So if you just give them a call or take a look, look them up online. They uh, do need ringers for collecting fees from the Salvation Army. Thanks.
Awesome. Any additional comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Paul Priblinsky.
Well, I uh, wanted to. Make a couple of comments tonight. And one was about a uh, volunteer group that was trying to put a roof on a veteran's home. And I, I, I was approached by the group having a. A problem getting a permit for the work. And that. The uh, group leader had to take out a general contractor's license. And get insurance for all the people, comp insurance for all the people working on it. That, that is a. A double-edged sword because that, to me. Really strikes down volunteerism in the community. That means that. A somebody, and to the extent, to the extent, this is part of the new code. That's why I'm making the comment, is that, so I called the Inspection Department. And I asked. What would I have to do if I took out a permit? And all my brothers were gonna help me. You know what I was told? That I have to get a general contractor's license and take insurance out on everybody. And, you know, I, I, I think that's what, that's overreached by government. I think that if people are volunteering, that maybe they should be advised by the person taking out the permit. To have people sign waivers. But let me say this, is that when you volunteer for something. That you accept the risk. It's just like if somebody goes water skiing with me. That they accept the risk. It's like you go to the lake, you accept the risk. So I'm just saying, this is another uh, ambiguity with the code. Because why should somebody? Who wants to volunteer? Be held back. And I, I don't buy that, that they gotta have insurance. Cause that is about volunteerism. And I know if I go and volunteer on a project. That I accept the risk. So now, I guess. You can't get away from it because that's in the code right now. So this is just another thing that we gotta discuss to uh. Try to make the code work for the people of Michigan City. And that's, then that's what it's all about. And I'm not buying in. To this thing that, well, we gotta protect the people. I'm not buying that. Cause I know a lot of people that helped other people do things on their homes. And uh. I, I just, you know, if you're not getting paid, i- if you're not getting paid. I don't even see how you can put workman's comp into it because you're not getting paid. You know, this is a big, uh, I think that's not a good enough argument. So, and also this evening, I wanted to uh, send my condolences to the family of. Ed Bowley, a uh, a prior Michigan City Police Officer. Uh, Michigan City, uh, La Porte, uh, excuse me, a Long Beach officer. And uh, a lifelong uh, family friend of mine. And volunteered with the uh, local ski, Sea Scouts Chapter. Was a volunteer for the Boy Scouts, teaching uh, gun safety course. For uh, youth and adults. Um, he was a, a. I guess as a friend, you can't find the words to explain it, but he really cared about Michigan City. And uh, he cared about the community with his volunteerism. And I just gotta say that uh. I think he was a excellent police officer with uh, many commendations. And uh, I, I just wanna send my condolences and let the public know. That. I believe that we lost a uh, person who really cared about Michigan City. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Don Priblinsky.
Yeah, thank man, thank you, Madam President. Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, number one, I want to uh, thank. The uh, volunteers for the Veterans Day Parade that took place uh, this past week. Uh, Mr. Jim Fisher from the Exchange Club, Dennis Schultz from the Exchange Club. They were the ones that actually coordinated it and their idea to bring it back. So. He had a great job there. And Terry Greatham, our events director, he also helped out. Uh, one thing I'd like to say about the parade, you know, there were probably more folks. In it than there were standing alongside the uh, the sidewalks. And, you know, when, when this parade, I know it's getting. Being brought back up and trying to get it going. But we really need to make a big deal out of this parade. And the community really needs to get behind it. Uh, the sidewalk, or the high school bands. I mean, they need to get involved uh, with this. The high schools need to get involved with it. This is about our veterans. And paying honor to them. Same thing with the uh, folks coming and, and lining the uh. You know, the parade route, you know. And, and the parade only takes twenty minutes from, I think it's Eighth Street. Down to the Public Library, you walk that in about twenty minutes, uh, even with stops. So anyway. Yeah, uh, great job by that group. And next year, let's really get out and let's really support this uh, this effort. And make the veterans uh, really feel great. Uh, I wanna uh, talk about the uh, purple lights. Purple streetlights here in Michigan City. And uh, the reason I'm doing that. And what reason I'm bringing that up in front of the council, because I took it in front.
And uh, the reason I'm doing that and one reason I'm bringing that up in front of the council, cause I took it in front of the Board of Works. But I wanna give the council members a uh, an update on, on where this uh, uh, stands. And I know it's been, these lights have been purple for I don't know, a long, I'm gonna say a long period of time. Uh, and then I went to the Board of Works on July nineteenth and addressed the board with my concerns, thinking that it's time now that we need to get these uh, fixed, find out who owns them, what remedies we have to do to uh, get it fixed. So the uh, board uh, accepted that. Uh, and then we went on. I was thinking that Nipco owned those lights. But Nipco does not own uh, those lights, okay? Cause I was looking for a rebate from us paying electric bills on these uh, streetlights, but that's not the case. Uh, they, they don't, they don't own them. So uh, there were, so then the inspection department was put on to the challenge to find out how many lights have turned purple in the city. And I wanna say there's between eighty to eighty-five uh, of these lights that have turned uh, purple. Uh, and finally, we did get a uh, the mayor set up a, a meeting uh, with Amber Lapage and Chris Shigelski and myself. And we talked to a gentleman by the name of Todd Anderson from the E S G Corporation that we dealt with when we signed the uh, contract back, back in twenty nineteen as far as energy reductions in the city. Uh, and we had that, and we had that Zoom meeting and at that time, uh, Todd Anderson was gonna go back to the manufacturer to see if the manufacturer would go ahead and pay for the uh, lights that have been malfunction now. And they, they have agreed to pay for the lights. They haven't necessarily a hundred percent agreed to pay for all the labor to replace those lights. And there's some other questions that need to be answered uh, in accordance with the contractor and this uh, these lights. So Amber Lapage, I was talking to Amber yesterday about this. Uh, and she said that what she's gonna do is get a Zoom meeting set up between E S G and the city again to get more questions answered. So we know exactly what's going on with these streetlights. You know, how long are they gonna be under warranty? Uh, you know, what happens after the warranty is over? Does the city then begun, then have to go out and buy L E D streetlight replacement kits and go out and start doing this work? So I think that's, that's uh, some of the things that we have to get answered. And I know that there was a letter or, yeah, a letter and a directive that came from the uh, Board of Works uh, back on November the seventh. And, 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 and I talked to uh, Virginia Keating, the president today. And we, and I asked her about this letter that, and then it says, there are councilmen, President Preswellinsky at the Board of Works. Uh, at the Board of Public Works and Safety Meeting held on Monday, December or November seventh, the board denied your request for replacement of purple lights on Franklin Street in Cleveland Ave. Okay, so I don't know exactly, you know, and referred this matter back to the council for further review. I didn't know exactly how to take that letter. If it was coming back to the city council, then now we have to monitor streetlights in town versus the whole city working as a team on public safety. But what Ms. Keating told me is that that wasn't the true spirit of, of, of the letter. What she was concerned of, if there has to have any legal, what she told me, if there had to be any legal follow up with this and these companies trying to get them to stand behind their contracts that instead of the Board of Works being involved with it, the city council would get their legal team together and try to go forward with that. But I don't think that that is the true gist of that. And I'm gonna find out more from uh, our city attorney when I get together with her for this meeting. But I just wanted to bring this up to the city council where we stand with these purple lights in Michigan City. Uh, it went on for a long time. I brought it to the Board of Works. Uh, they got involved with it and, cause I thought enough was enough. I thought it looked kinda silly. A lot of people were asking me. So got involved and this is where we stand right now. So after we have the Zoom meeting with E S G, I'll send that information out to the uh, council members and let them know uh, what's going on with this. Okay?
Yes, thank you. And you know what? And I know you're gonna, I'm talking to Attorney Harris. Um, my question, cause we're still paying them money. And I'm like, are they the guarantor of the services or the? I'm trying to understand E S G, cause seems like they've been malfunctioning for a couple of years now. Like they should owe us some money versus us owing them money, so.
Yeah, see that, those are questions that Amber Lapage has, it's the city attorney. Even myself, you know, I remember signing this contract back, back in twenty nineteen, guaranteed that in ten years, the city is going to uh, save approximately a, a million dollars on energy savings. Plus uh, it, it, they also went around to every department in the city and looked at all their energy uses and, you know, if there was uh, efficiencies that could be put into place. And there were quite a few uh, efficiencies that were put in place. But uh, yes, Madam President, I have questions and uh, hopefully at that next Zoom meeting, we can get those uh, questions answered. And if anybody else has any questions, feel free to email them to me. And then when I go to that Zoom meeting, like, you know, try to get answers uh, to what we're dealing with there. Okay?
Awesome.
And, and finally, I just wanna wish everybody in the city Happy Thanksgiving, enjoy the holiday, enjoy your family and be safe. Eat a lot of turkey, a lot of pumpkin pie and watch a lot of football and have a few beers. Aye.
Alright, thank you.
Yep.
In, any additional um, council comments? Any additional council?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, uh, you know about this letter that Councilman Don Preswellinsky is talking about? You know, the way I look at this letter is that, you know, the Board of Public Works and Safety is exactly what it is, what it states. And then they're, they're putting this, throwing this back to the council. Um, I don't, I don't really, that, that to me seems like what, what the heck's the city council gonna do about it? We got no authority as a board. What, what are we gonna do? You guys gonna give me, I'll go get electrical license and uh, guys buy me a boom truck and a safety harness? What, that's what our next role is gonna be? Yeah, I gotta get a general contractor's license first. But thi- this to me is seems that there's a, a effort of non-willingness to solve a problem. That's the way I interpret this letter. And you know, I think that, that's why that board is established as it states, the Board of Public Works and Safety. You brought up a safety concern and they should be on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Yes.
Yeah, and you know, and I know that the mayor is on the uh, Public Board of Works and that he attended this meeting when it was decided that, you know, this, this request was gonna be denied. And you know, all I got was a letter. I didn't get a phone call with an explanation to say, hey, this is the way that we're gonna proceed, you know, to get this done with. Uh, myself, being a city councilman with a hundred streetlights burning purple instead of burning white. You know, what am I supposed to do? Am I supposed to come to the city council meeting and ask my fellow council members, what are we gonna do with this problem? You know, the mayor sits on this board. Uh, you have two other individuals that sit on the board. I figured if you're gonna try to get something resolved, we can start with them. Then if we wanna go in a different directions, then how about calling us together and telling us what direction you'd like to go into instead of just receiving a uh, a letter in the mail, two sentences long saying, we had denied your request. Okay, so what do I do? Do I tell my constituents? The request has been denied. Sorry, we're gonna have purple lights forever. There's nothing that Councilman Don Preswellinsky can do about it, cause the Board of Works, well, there's something I, I'm gonna do about it, I know that. But the Board of Works, which the mayor sits on and two other individuals, they denied the request to get the lights fixed. So I don't know what else to do, except we're moving forward in the direction that myself and the city attorney are gonna do. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Um, any additional comments from the council? Any additional comments? I, I do wanna send my condolences to the Bobillo family. Um, and I'll leave that there. Um, and um, also I know that uh, we have, we're gonna probably have in December, um, we got a couple of things. Like I said, I shared the workshop um, about the annexation. So that'll be coming up on the agenda um, with some amendments. And then also um, we need to talk about uh, the lit tax and, and um, the public safety lit and, and um, possible negotiations. So that will probably be an executive session um, sometime in, in December. So with the, the police and fire. Um, with that being said, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Motion for, alright, meeting adjourned.